All right, I'd like to call to order Briston, Virginia City Council for March 23rd, 2019. Please join me for a moment of silence. Please stand for Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
So everybody get your microphones on and we're all good? Okay?
Good morning, Council. That didn't sound like we were awake this morning, so I would encourage everyone that we wake up, we don't fret, we keep moving, don't worry about things and you need more coffee?
I'm up, I've got my coffee.
But it's time for us to wake up and get moving. Once again, budget goals, we were talking today about the self-sustaining Solid Waste Disposal Fund, which is not self-sustaining at the moment, and landfill, the total cost of the city over the course of the lifetime of the landfill, it's cost the city $77.2 million. And the comparisons that we went over with, we do not have option five listed up here. We staff never felt like that option five was a realistic option, that was the one that was going to $51 a month. So pared this back down to options one, two, three, and four. Option one is makes the landfill self-sustaining as current operations currently exist until the landfill remains closed, which is, I think, what everybody would like to get, would like for that to happen, plus it's been an audit finding, but once again, $44 makes it self-sustaining for the future, moving forward with a potential CPI increase every year or so. So with a $44 option, you would buy $2 million worth of liner this year. In 1920, you would have $622,900 set aside for post-closure. You would have $700,000 set aside in 2021 for liner accrual. In 2021, you would also have $1,070,000 set aside for closure accrual. You would not need any prior year cash carryover for 1920. Option two is $37.75, it's 1.852 million in liner that we would be able to purchase. We would have money to set aside for the post-closure in 1920 of $270,900. You would also have $750,000 to be able to set aside for 2021 liner accrual, and then in 2021 closure accrual, $520,900. And once again, we would not use any cash from the prior year. Option three, which in my opinion is the worst option out of these four, is the 1.852 million. It only puts $20,900 aside for post-closure costs in 1920. It's $500,000 in liner accrual. It's also 200, and that's 2021, and then 220,000 for closure accrual in 2021, plus we will have to pull $300,000 in cash from prior year savings to cover expenses. Option four is $33. It allows for 1.852 million in liner, 180,500 post-closure. I will tell you all that that is not enough. We have, we have to get caught up. Also, it requires $600,000 in liner accrual, 280,500 enclosure accrual, both of those are in next year's budget, plus an additional $300,000 for cash carryover from 1920. So I will sit down and we'll let Council discuss.
Okay. All right, who wants to start? Can we start? You all want to start? All right. We've had, we've had a lot of discussion, I think there's a lot of analysis been happening over the last week since we last met. I've seen a few emails, I think people are coming closer to the, to the number they feel is reasonable where we are. I will say that when I, when I discuss and tell you my number, I think what Randy's shown here, we're coming back close to the, these numbers, but because the, you know, citizens and the businesses in town didn't create this problem, you know, we gotta, we gotta be what's reasonable and fair going forward. So we do have an issue that's going to take probably a couple, three budget cycles, maybe four, to work our way more to where we really want to be going forward. So I want to say, at least from my perspective, I want to try to avoid trying to get there all at once, you know, I want to be real careful that we have a little bit more time to analyze what else we can do going forward. So, so with that said, I think I'm closer to somewhere around option three, but I would like, I would, I would like the number to be just south of $30 because for citizens, I don't think, I think going from 22 above 30 is, is a really large jump. I think, I feel more comfortable that it should be a little bit less than $30. So I'm somewhere around 29.50, 29.75 rate increase, which is about a 34%, 35% rate increase, which that's still significant. And so I would, I would say what's fair is with that same rate increase, I look at is we apply that consistently across the board. So the businesses, as an example, are at $80 for a 95 gallon container, so the same 35% that we go up on the citizens gets applied to the businesses. So, so it's a pretty fair across the board, everybody's having to go up in their rate, and it appears that it's, it's not the full step, but it's, it's one big forward step, which is, you know, not a 5 or 10% jump, it's a 30-plus percent jump, which is, which is a big jump. And we've got to have at least a good forward positive jump to get some cash going, to, to get that landfill moving more towards sustainability. It still doesn't cover, like Randy's showing up there, it doesn't cover the full post-closure accruals, it doesn't cover, you know, the full, the full liner, so there are some, some cash items which, like he said, we'd have to generate from another, another account, but that's what we've been doing up to this point in time anyway. So, so we've been subsidizing those shortfalls through the general fund, you know, up until this point, so, so we'll be subsidizing at a less rate while we try to figure out what other items we can do to create an additional revenue increase or cost reduction up there. So, so I'm kind of at a 34% to 35% increase, which is 29.50 to 29.75 for the citizens, and it takes the $80, like a $108 for a 95 gallon can, and it takes the $160 rate on a quarterly basis to around 215 for businesses, and that's, that's where I'm at today.
And I'm going to echo those comments there, and I'm going to add that, you know, everything that we do in this city, we have to be careful, because if we increase everything to where it should be with our current financial situation, we wouldn't have no residents. I mean, we have to be careful and take this, take these steps up slowly. Everybody knows that the landfill is not making money, never has, and it's going to be a while before it does to break even. But there's so many things that this city has done that it's never made money. I mean, and we know that we have a huge debt that's coming, and we've got to prepare for it. There's a lot of obstacles that we have to face and navigate around. I mean, the landfill's not the only thing that's not profitable. The books are showing that the golf course is now making money, but it's not counting in the $2 million worth of debt that was refinanced and taken off of their books and went to the general fund debt, the general debt. So they're still in reality not profitable. And if we took their rates up to offset that $2 million, well, they wouldn't have nobody playing golf. They just wouldn't have nobody playing golf. And if we take these can rates up to where they need to be, we won't have no cans out there. It's the same philosophy. So we have to really think about what we're doing and how we do it, and have a long-term plan to get us where we need to be, and take steps that's not going to just blow everybody's mind. Now, I'm not in favor of just raising on the 7,011 cans that we have in the residential side. The numbers are showing that we've got cans sitting inside the city with businesses that needs to be adjusted there to help offset. And I believe that we can get there, and I believe that we can do it for around 30, a little under $30 like the mayor is proposing, instead of going to 33, or 37, or 44. We have to take steps that the people won't storm the doors and hang us off. So that's my position on it.
So one of the first rules that I learned is you don't ask, you don't ask questions you don't know the answer to, so I'm going to ask some questions I know the answer to. So money-wise, what's the difference if we go 29.50 as opposed to going 33? What's the, what's the, how much less money would we take in?
These are estimated numbers. I don't want people to say numbers are changing. It says we're doing it on the fly, so I don't want to hear that I said something last week. I mean, these are numbers that we're just calculating based on what's being thrown out today. So it's a $3.50 difference. It's $280,000.
So I did the math. So 7,011 residential times 12 times 29.50, you'd bring in a total of 2,000, or 2,481,894, right?
And then you have to take out 5% of that that goes to BBU.
Okay. So without taking out the 5%, the total shortfall between 29.50 and 33 would be 294, 462, so that gets you about 280?
Roughly, yes.
So what would that 280, what would that lack of the 280,000 do?
Well, you've only got a couple of options, and we'll just start with the $33 option. You're going to have to buy less liner, or you're setting aside no money for post-closure.
So neither one of those, you would say are good options?
I'm going to tell you, and I will advise my CFO next year at the certification, if we're not setting an appropriate amount of money aside for that, I'm going to advise her not to sign that certification.
So would this, would this involve us pulling money from an unassigned fund balance?
It depends on how much you want to spend. If you want to buy 1.8 million in liner and you want to keep post-closure the same, we would have to pull it from somewhere.
So let me comment on that just for a second. So the 280 is right, I do agree with that number. That's, you know, that's 294 times 95%. I think less liner is the right option, because going forward, trying to come up with ways to not be putting as much trash in that dump as we have been. So the, so the idea of planning forward, you don't want to over commit on the capital. So buying less liner as we, as we fill it up is probably the right thing to do, is we're analyzing where we're going to be in 24 months and 30 months. So you don't want to commit to a full liner at $2 million, and then all of a sudden we figure out a way of not having the same usage rate, and then we've overspent on that capital. So I would, I would support less liner now, and we just, we buy exactly what it takes to get you, you know, just through the next 18 to 20 months, and then you add to that as you go forward. We have to accrue, so there's going to have to be some money that accrues for the post-closure. That's fact. So we haven't been accruing at all, potentially, we've put a little bit, we'll say, but the way we should be accruing. So we've got to, we've got to figure that out, so the, so the unassigned fund balance, you know, is, is above our threshold on the, where we need to be with the, you know, with financial policies. So there's a little bit of money there, it's not a lot, but there is, there is a little bit of money in there, once it's all accounted for, that we can still have some, some funds to accrue for, for the post-closure, which has to be part of the solution. We've got to have at least, I think, a hundred, a couple hundred thousand dollars in total that we, that we find in that extra money to make sure we're accruing for, for both landfills, for the, for the one that's already needing to be capped and closed, and the one that we're currently operating on. So I would support that, and we've got to figure out where, where we get that money.
Just a quick question, well, a comment. I know we're talking about paying for the liner and paying cash, not borrowing for it, and I think that's a big step, because the last time we bought liner, just, I'm assuming a few years ago, did we finance it and borrow money?
We did.
So I think that's a big step we're actually taking to, to kind of get over the hump and we're actually deciding we're paying cash for these things and not borrow, borrowing anymore. It seems like a lot of us are, are sort of understanding and in agreement that the rate does need to change, and it is going to be changing. There was a chart that we looked at last time where it was, it never changed from like when the current landfill was open in 1999 or so up to 2009, the rate was like $8, and it, it never changed, even any for, for inflation. So it's, I think everyone has enjoyed the last, you know, 20 years of really low rates. Now we're sort of having to play catch-up a little bit to, to make up for it, and to do the things we need to do, like pay cash instead of borrowing for that. And the mayor just mentioned buying a smaller amount of liner. I was going to ask Wallace, what, do you have any thoughts on the amount of liner needed? What we, what we need to have, and what can we get by with, and is there a, would there be a big difference in price with that?
There's going to be a mobilization cost regardless of how much liner we put in that won't change, and I'm not sure exactly what that's going to be. We, we haven't gotten the most recent estimate from them. We can adjust it up or down, the amount of liner that we put in. I think it just, it, it means that we have to buy it sooner than we would expect. We were hoping this liner would last us, what, three, four years?
Three or four.
Three or four years, and so now we may have to buy a liner again in two years. And so if, if we keep with our current disposal rates, that's, that's basically what that means for us.
Okay.
So you said that we'd need a new liner in two to three years?
If we put in what we were hoping to put in, it would be, it would last three to four years.
Okay.
But if we, if we reduce it, you're talking maybe two years, so we'd have to put liner again in two years.
And how much liner would you have to put in?
Well, again, it depends on how long you want that liner to last. At our current, at our current disposal rates, we need, we feel like we need to spend about $2 million on a liner that would last us three to four years.
Awesome. I guess my point is, looking at those numbers, if, if you go down to 29, I don't know what, how you change the accrual, but you're looking at 500,000 to 600,000. If you need to put one in two years, you've only, then would have enough cash on hand to buy 1.2 million worth of liner, that's how much you've accrued. I guess is that going to be, if you go smaller and then you need a liner quicker, is that going to be enough liner? You see what I'm saying?
We keep, we keep cutting the amount of liner that we're putting in, and so that means we need to put it in more frequently, and the cost of putting it in more frequently like that goes up. Yeah, because of the mobilization cost. It just, we, we lose the efficiency of putting in a, a larger amount as we, if we shorten it down.
Well, what would the cost be, you think, of the less liner if it just lasts two years?
I'm sorry, what now?
You, you said 2 million to, to make it go three to four years. What do you think the cost would be if it's only a two-year, you know, buy less liner?
A two-year liner is, is probably going to be on the order of 1.85. Yeah, and I guess to, that's the other thing, to say that, it depends on what section we're in. There's, there's a, there's a little alcove down in there that needs to be prepared for liner, and it's going to be expensive because it has to be, we have to actually put in clay to fill it up, to prepare the liner. We have to get some of the rock that's on the, the cliff face loosened and, and removed because it's dangerous to be up in there. So there's certain sections that cost more than others, and until we get this most recent estimate back, we won't really know exactly how much we get for what we pay. It's not a linear thing because it depends on where you are, where you're putting the liner, and, and what you have to do to put it in.
So it wouldn't be half? It wouldn't be like 1 million, it'd be more like probably a million two, or a million four, or something like that?
Something like that, yeah.
Wallace, in regards to, we're at, we're getting three estimates for the landfill liner. It looks like there's an A section, a B section, a C section, right? So depending on where you are in those sections, and I believe the B section includes the alcove.
Yes.
What did it, what, what you have in that wall, it's not just completely smooth like you're going around the football stadium. What you have is you go around, it cuts back into the rock wall some more, and then round, and then back out normally, so that's the alcove that has to be corrected. Correct me if I'm wrong, but the liner that we just bought has only lasted a little over two years.
Yeah.
It's not, it's right at two years.
Right.
It will be, if we move forward around July with new liner purchase, that will be about two years, and it was 1.5 million.
Right.
Did we pyramid before that liner was put up? Is that why it was used up at such a rapid rate?
Yes.
And now we're not pyramid?
Not at the moment, but we will be here shortly if we don't get the liner up.
And if, on a normal tonnage going in to the landfill with no pyramid, and the liner's estimated to last, how long?
If, if we put in what we, what we're hoping to, we're thinking three to four years.
Three to four years?
Yes.
With no pyramid?
Right, that's correct.
And once you start pyramid, and how long can you pyramid before you have to do a liner?
You get, I guess, an additional 50%, maybe 40% more material in there, probably more like 40, less than half. So you can go, if you started pyramid, and yeah, you might be able to get another year, year and a half out of it.
So you can pyramid for a year?
Possibly, yes. But you've got to be...
And then when you, then when you install the liner and you take it back flat again, you have how much life estimated in that liner? You've pyramid it for a year, then you install your liner, and then you take it back level. From that point there, what's the life of that liner?
Then you're still, then you're still pyramid-ing if you don't add more liner?
Yeah, I'm talking about adding the liner after a year pyramid.
Adding the liner after that?
After a year pyramid.
Then, then you, if you bring it up to level, plus you go up higher, you know, then you've got, what, three?
If you put in a two-year liner, you've pyramid it all the way up to less than that.
The other thing about pyramid-ing is it makes it more difficult to install the liner, because what happens is the, the stormwater runoff that goes in there collects at the side where they have to install the liner. Then when they're putting the liner in, if it's, if it's rainy at all, it becomes a muddy mess, and so the cost of the liner starts to go up when you, when you start pyramid-ing like that. It's an inefficient way to do things.
Sam, can you go into the practicalities of pyramid-ing and how the liner works once you pyramid, and the installation of a liner after a pyramid?
Basically, you're taking your, like a cup of salt, and you're pouring over the top, and you've got nothing to hold that in, so it's going to run off. So you've got to go back and put your liner in, which is basically setting a new level above it, and all you've got left is that little bit of airspace around that outside. What's going to cost you even more is once you've done that, and you have such runoff, you have to go in there, and we have to build a rock road, and I believe rocks somewhere around $23 a ton for us right now. You've got to build a rock road all the way around that so they have a base where they can get the equipment in to hang the new liner. So now not only have you wasted money on losing your airspace, you're losing money on having to build them a road for your scale work to even begin the next process, which is just, it just becomes, it becomes a big loss if you have to go back and do pyramid-ing. If we go in and we can get what we are looking at, the next mobilization on this section, to an extent, we should actually be near the lip of the front west section, and we can actually do some pyramid-ing that won't cost us as much next year. We, we've discussed it, and we haven't got our numbers back, but I think you might even get a little bit more than your three to four years out of this one. But it's if we can get that entire section, and that section C that he's talking about is actually a very small section, but over the years, they have cut every corner they can, and we're down to the spot where now we have to go back in and really tackle some of these spots that have been left for us.
So what you're basically saying is the pyramid-ing's not been the right thing to do, because it's actually cost us more through the long term. So if we go and we're stopping that practice now of the pyramid-ing, whether we go with a less full liner or a full liner, we're going to get more life out of it than we historically have gotten, because we're going to change the way we're putting the trash in there.
Correct.
Okay, so was your comment about the life of, you know, two to four years, or three to four years and two years, was that based on not pyramid-ing?
Yes.
Okay. That makes sense, because we're getting more life, okay.
And I think that's also based on the $2 million liner, is that right?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
I mean, I guess my thoughts on this is, is you look back, and this is something, you know, since I've been on council, it's always a head-scratcher, we've been trying to, to move forward. I think this is the first time we've actually had, you know, before it was just us kind of guessing, trying to, to make up a, a difference. We have raised rates in the past, but this time we've actually brought engineers in that understand how solid waste disposal facility works, and try to, to give us some guidance, as well as get other opinions. So, you know, I think that, that's a good step, we're moving in the right way, and as Anthony said, and I think everybody agrees the rates are going up. I mean, I don't see how you can, cannot do that, you know, and that really, you know, what are the problems we're trying to solve? And I think everybody, as Mayor said, you're not going to do this all in one year, but when you look at the, the landfill, from an operational cost, it's always been, well, one, the liner, to make sure that you have enough money to set aside and accrue for that, because in the past, it's always been borrowed, and we can't do that anymore. The other thing is to make sure that we're adequately where we need to be with all of our post-closure and closure costs, and to reduce the general fund transfer. And, you know, those are the things, those, particularly the post-closure and the general fund transfer, our audit, the rating agencies, the auditor of public accounts, everybody keeps pointing to those. So ultimately, that's where we need to go. Looking at those numbers, I mean, that 44, get you, get you close to that? I mean, but I don't think you can do that in one year, that, that's not realistic, and it may not even be that number, it actually may be higher, but listen to what they're saying. I think if you go below 30, you're not setting aside enough, I mean, you look at the 31, you've only got a quarter of a million in accrual for the liner. I don't think you're going to be accruing enough money in the liner, so that the next time that comes up, you're going to be able to deal with it. And particularly all of those options, anything below the 37, it's kind of, you know, again, it's not preferable, but you're taking cash from the prior year to start this. I mean, so you're already dipping in to your cash, so I think less than 30 is, you're not going to be able to accrue for the liner quick enough, I don't think, or set aside enough to make a difference in the, in the closure and post-closure. I don't necessarily have a, an issue with raising the rates on, on the businesses, you know, talking about fairness, although my understanding is out of the seven, over 7,000, there's only about 130, I think.
Roughly 130, it's 130. Two accounts that are business account, 136.
So when you, you know, increase that, I did, just real quick off the top of my head, I mean, you know, if it's, I don't know, $40 a quarter, you're only looking at maybe a 20-some thousand dollar increase in total. So I don't know that, 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 I mean, you know, every little bit helps, but I don't know how significant that is in, in a $5 million enterprise fund, and I worry, because some of those businesses might go with a commercial hauler, and, and you'd lose a little bit of revenue, but also that, you know, that would fall primarily on small business. Larger businesses would, they already use dumpsters or a commercial service, so the small businesses, you know, would say that, that we're not being fair to them, putting too much burden on the small business. So it's a, it's a concern to keep in mind, but, you know, again, when we... work out that rate, I'm not opposed to it going up, but I do think, uh, thirty dol-, anything below thirty is, is way too low. Uh, you know, I, I think probably that while I, I don't necessarily like going up that much, but I think the, uh, last option there gets us, seems to accrue enough to, to get us on, and set aside enough money, uh, going forward. And as we all say, you know, the thing is, we're gonna have to revisit this over a period of years. So, uh, I think if you go up, the more you, if you go up a little more now, maybe you won't have to as much in, in the coming years. Uh, you know, and I think back to, uh, the tax increase when, when, uh, we first, when I first came on council with, um, Mr. Hubbard, and, you know, we did that to, um, build up our, our reserve or unassigned fund balance. Uh, and the idea was to do more quicker so you get the influx of cash and then you would have to do less over time. Uh, so, uh, and that worked pretty well using that philosophy. And I think here, uh, you know, trying to do, if you do less, you're gonna have to continue to do larger amounts. Maybe if you do a little more upfront, you could, uh, do less in the future. So.
Yeah, I mean, from that standpoint, I would rather it be, you know, talking about fairness more equally spread out than just, you know, taking a small hit one year and then having to raise it even more because we all realize that they're gonna have to keep going up, you know, even if it's just, you know, inflationary increases to keep pace with where it needs to be because that was, that was our problem to start with, right? You know, that we never raised rates for so long, it never kept up with inflation. So I mean, it has to keep up with inflation anyway and we're gonna have to, I think we all understand, agree, you know, that it's gonna have to go up again, you know, next fiscal year too. So I mean, I would, I would much rather be moving in a more equal fashion than, you know, just doing a small or a smaller increase than doing a smaller increase this year and having to do an even bigger one next year. Because nobody likes it, but we have, you know, it's something that has to be done.
I think, uh, one important thing is that, that it seems like we're all talking and we're all in, uh, agreement that the rate does need to change this year. Uh, you know, I mentioned the rate never changed from ninety-nine to two thousand nine and then we sit here and we look back and we say, what were those people, why did they do that? Because, yeah, I don't think you can ever expect to keep up with cost and inflation and put money away in savings like we need to do when the rate never changes any for, you know, ten-plus years. So I think if we were all sitting here and we were all saying, we don't wanna change the rate any, we would be doing the same thing those people were doing back twenty, fifteen years ago. So I think, you know, we all are, we all are talking about the rate changing this year. Um, so now I think it's just, and it's kind of a touchy subject too because anytime you talk about the rate changing, no one's happy about it, nobody wants to, but I think we all at least understand what the problem is, what the situation is and, and sort of what the plan is going forward over the next, this year and few years going forward in the future.
I think Bill, you know, Bill's right. I think the, um, you know, this, this rate is just the residential rate, you know, it doesn't include the, the businesses. They're charged at eighty dollars for ninety-five gallon container today and, you know, it's a hundred and sixty. So, so my percent increase was to increase them up at the same rate. So that adds about, you know, it takes a seventy-two thousand dollar a year revenue coming from businesses up to about ninety-seven thousand dollars. So it's about a twenty, it's about a twenty-five thousand dollar increase. So the difference between the, the thirty-three dollar option and, and the, you know, the twenty-nine fifty I talked about, you know, if we, those is three forty, three hundred and forty thousand versus the two eighty we just talked about. So it, it cuts, it cuts the delta gap there, you know, basically in half. So you're, you're down to, you know, talking, you know, we're kinda talking about twenty grand that we're different in where we wanna be, um, between the two numbers. So, so it doesn't, you know, neither solution is ideal, obviously, but, um, you know, it's, it's, it's just what is, what is, what is right since the citizens didn't create the problem and the businesses didn't. We know we had, gotta go up to keep inflation, uh, keep up with inflation and to get a solution, but we, we gotta be careful not to overshoot it either because we are working more diligently now about, you know, what can we do to improve the efficiency of landfill? What can we do to keep the, you know, the amount of trash to a minimum? You know, what can we do to extend the liner life? So the worst thing to do would be maybe overshoot our rate, you know, while we're trying to solve those problems. So over the next year after this budget cycle, on the next one, if we solve those, you know, it, there's a chance that we've come up with something that you wouldn't have to take it up the amount that everybody's thinking, but we're not there yet because there's a lot left, you know, to look at. And, and we've been looking at that. And so there's, there's, uh, some very detailed information that's been culled over for, you know, a couple of months now. So we're getting closer to understanding what could be done. And some of that is competitive in nature. Obviously, we can't, you know, go out and talk about a lot of that, but, but there are some things there that we can do. And so we just gotta, again, be careful to, to not overstep it, take it up in a reasonable amount and give ourselves some more time to get more aggressive at a solution so we don't have to go up the next time in the amount that everybody might be thinking we have to today because we're gonna make some improvements. I mean, they've, they've already come up with some good solutions already about how to process the, the trash so we don't pyramid. And it, and those are all good, that's, that's what this process creates, you know? Talking through a problem like that and why do we pyramid is helping to, helping to get everybody's head around it and trying to come up with some solutions. And, and there's probably five things we hadn't thought about yet that we're still talking through. So, so we're challenging ourselves, so what are we missing? Um, and so, so we're getting close. I think everybody on council's, you know, within, you know, twenty or thirty thousand dollars of the two numbers. Um, so we just gotta settle on, you know, where do we wanna end up? And then I think the big question is on the accrual because we, we can't ask the CFO to sign something. I wouldn't sign something unless we're putting away accrual money that's reasonable. So, you know, do we understand where that's coming from? I think we need to talk about that for a second and, you know, make sure that, you know, there is a difference here between, you know, how much your post-closure of, you know, say twenty thousand or whatever and one eighty, that's a big difference. So what, what are we gonna, what are we gonna settle on if we go to either one of these options? Because neither one is, option four doesn't even cover, cover the full accrual that you really would say you, you'd need potentially, you know, for, for everything in the future, but it's a lot more than we have been doing. So we gotta settle on that.
I'll be honest, I don't think I'm worried. Consensus, I think I know where four of you are, but I don't know where the fifth is in regards to rates. And, um, if the rate isn't, if the rate's not one of these options, if it's twenty-nine or so, I'll have to put off the budget presentation till April ninth.
Why is that?
We just have to go back and figure out those numbers and see.
On the, on the accrual, you mean?
Yep.
This was handed to us, uh, in our room there. Is this your proposed increases?
Yes.
All right. Is these proposed increases factored into any of, of these options?
It's about, it's, it's about the ten thousand dollars.
Yeah, it's, it's forty thousand a year. No, yeah, it's forty thousand dollars a year. Yeah. It's a forty thousand increase.
Yes.
Okay. Is that factored in on any of these?
Absolutely. No. Okay.
I, I haven't seen that, Wallace. Is that in your, um, requested budget?
No, it's not. It's just something we worked up last week. Wait, wait. I don't recall. I'd have to look again.
Okay.
Okay. Um, you know, I'm, I'm just gonna go back to, you know, the city has subsidized this landfill since its conception, since the day it was open. This city has subsidized it. The bottom line is everybody crossing those scales is gonna have to start paying more. If it goes in that landfill, they gotta pay more money to use the landfill. And I'm opposed to raising it to a rate that is just gonna be too much, too quick. Okay? It don't take a rocket scientist to figure out these rates have got to go up. We have got to start making more money in this landfill, but it needs to be fair across the board to everybody. If you just take the debt alone and add the liner to it at five hundred thousand a year, they're saying three to four years, so hopefully we can get four years out of this liner, at five hundred thousand a year, that's two million dollars. If you just take the debt and the liner, nothing else, you're at thirty-two dollars a month before the first man clocks in Monday morning. And then all your operational cost kicks in. So our ratepayers out here are at a thirty-two dollar disadvantage every single month on their can rate. That is an obstacle that is gonna be huge to overcome. And the only way we're gonna do that is for everybody crossing those scales to pay what is fair and reasonable. Because if you take the rates, where you took option five off, because if you took the rates where they need to be right now, it's somewhere between the forty-eight, fifty, thirty, fifty-two dollar a month charge right now.
Right.
That's, that, that can't be done at one time. But, uh, we have to have a long-term plan that is viable, that it will get us to where we need to be. But the people using the landfill has got to step up somehow, some way. And we need to not overreact in one budget cycle. We went from just a few years back, it was, uh, fifteen dollars a can, and then we raised it to eighteen, and then we raised it to twenty-two, and now we're sitting here talking about thirty-three is not even a real option, but you've got it up there anyway. And two of us are saying that it doesn't need to break thirty right now because regardless, whether you go option four or option three or option two, the city is still going to be subsidizing this landfill. There's no way around it. At the end of the year, the city is gonna write a check. So let's don't freak everybody out.
Well, the city's writing a check at option one, too.
Yeah, you are. Yeah, you are.
So I mean, any option up here, you're subsidizing the landfill.
So the real fix to this problem, the only real fix to this problem is that we have to grow this city. We have to get more businesses in here, get our tax revenues, new tax revenues, not put it on the backs of the people already here, but new businesses coming in and keep growing this city. Because the, the more businesses and residents we have, the less it costs everybody to do business.
But in the meantime, what are we gonna do here?
That's just it. In the meantime, we can't run them off.
Well, we're not gonna run them off of it. What's, what's the magic number with being under thirty dollars as opposed to thirty?
A psychological thing.
Well, what's the difference between thirty-three and forty then?
That's right.
So you could bait the difference between a couple of dollars all day long, right?
Let's do forty.
It's, it's a, it's a number. That's the only difference is it's a number.
Yeah.
So if you're at thirty-three, why not go to forty-four? And if you're at forty-four, why not go to fifty-two?
Or if you're twenty-nine fifty, why not go to thirty-three? Because you don't wanna make people mad.
That's just it. It's a psychological thing.
Once you get close on the number, you gotta see, there, there's other things than just the numbers. There, there's the reasonableness of, of what, what rate you're increasing. There's the psychological nature, what's right to do for the citizens because they didn't create the problem, right? So once you know you have to go up and now you're within a couple of dollars of where you need to be, it, all those other, you know, indirect things start to become part of the discussion. You know, do you end up, you know, here versus here based on, you know, where we really should be, what's right for this community because, you know, again, they didn't create this problem. We're just trying to solve it as we go forward, not taking too much of a drastic step. So, so those are important.
Well, we didn't create the problem. They didn't create the problem, but we're here to fix the problem.
But we don't need to create another problem in fixing the problem.
You can overcr-
So we're just gonna, I'm, I'm, we're kicking the can down the road with any of these solutions.
Absolutely.
We're originally gonna kick it even further with twenty on fifty.
We're absolutely kicking it, and we have been for twenty years, and we're kicking it down the can for every one of these, right? But we're trying to take at least one step forward to get this thing solved in a couple, three, four budget cycles. Because you, you can't undo twenty-five years of mismanagement, right, in a couple budget cycles.
No, absolutely not.
Right? So you can't do that. So, so you could go and do it all at once, right? And that would shock the entire community, business community and citizens.
Wouldn't shake you out for that. I think we agree with that.
Right? Or you can take multiple steps. So we're talking about a step, right? So I think we're getting down to talking the difference between how big that step is. So it's, it's, you know, it's not, we're not far off for how big that step is. Somebody wants to take a four-foot step, somebody wants to take a three-and-a-half foot step, right? So that's what we're talking about.
If we're, if you're talking this is over three to four years and we're not setting aside the six hundred thousand, then we're gonna end up like we did last time, thinking we set enough money aside and just for the liner accrual. Last time we thought we had enough and the line is shorter. I would rather, if, if, if it's three to four years at one point eight million, I'd rather have the money there in three years and be hap-, and be lucky if it went the fourth year and then you have a little money to the next one. So maybe next time you don't have to set something aside rather than being short and coming up in that third or fourth year and trying to make up the difference. And the, the po-, the closure and post-closure, I mean, we've got to put something in there as well. And that's where I don't see how we can accomplish those two goals, uh, or, or objectives, whatever you wanna call them. If you go under thirty, um, you know, I, again, we're not gonna solve the problem, but I think if you can at least take care of that, then as we look towards the future, again, when you do the other rate increases, maybe, hopefully they won't have to be as, as dramatic because you've already taken care of, of making sure you've got enough at least for the liner and, and started, uh, a good, healthy way towards the closure and post-closure.
But here's the way I'm looking at it. It was just a few short years ago that this city out of the general fund was spending a couple of million dollars a year to subsidize that landfill. Am I correct on that?
Yeah.
Just a few short years ago. This last budget cycle, we had it worked out to where it's less than six hundred thousand dollars. The ci-, the city was subsidizing the landfill. But the problem is, we still borrowed two million dollars for the liner. Now we're working on a scenario where we're trying to work that two million dollars into the cost of the landfill operations. And we need to do that because we need to quit borrowing the money to buy that liner. So the way I'm looking at it is if two or three, or so many years ago, however many years ago it was, we were subsidizing in the millions, then we've dropped back down to right a little over a half a million. It's like six hundred, like, four, five hundred and eighty thousand, something like that. And then we add the liner back in, then that is a one point one, one point two million dollar subsidy, again, that the city is going to subsidize till we can get a rate increase in place to start offsetting the cost of that liner. We're gonna have to take a step back. In my opinion, we need to take a step back and subsidize until these rates can be kicking and start setting money aside. But to throw this burden on the people all at once in thirty-three, thirty-seven, forty-four dollars is too much, too quick, and we need to regroup.
Did, correct, did, did you just say we should add six hundred thousand out of the general fund back in? What we're, so we should keep the rates low and then make the general tran-, fund transfer back up to a million?
If it turns out that in nineteen twenty, at a twenty-nine fifty rate, twenty-nine ninety-five, whatever, I don't wanna bust thirty, if we don't generate enough money, right now, if we locked in to no increases, it would be a six hundred thousand or five hundred thousand increase on top of the six hundred thousand with zero rate increase. But the rate increase is going to roll up, roll in, so it's less subsidizing at the end. It ain't gonna be no five hundred thousand increase on the liner. Say we get this rate increase. What did you say that rate increase was gonna generate?
Which one?
At twenty-nine fifty.
What it generates or what the difference is between thirty-three and twenty-nine fifty? If you're generating, uh, between twenty-nine fifty and twenty-two, If you're generating, uh, between twenty-nine fifty and twenty-two, you're generating six hundred and thirty thousand, nine hundred and ninety dollars. Well, hold on, let me get you the exact number, five ninety-nine, four forty.
There's the liner. So basically, we don't have to subsidize, we just make another five hundred and eighty thousand dollar transfer from the city treasurer to the landfill, just like we did this year.
So you're saying?
And we didn't borrow a liner, we didn't borrow the money.
So you're saying that we would have to increase the amount of the general fund transfer?
No, it would stay the same at these numbers.
I'm lost. Because I don't know how you would keep it at, if you kept, are you saying keep it at twenty-two?
No. I'm saying take it to twenty-nine fifty.
All right, if you take it to twenty-nine fifty,
take it to twenty-nine fifty, generate the other six hundred and eighty thousand dollars over the course of the year, and there's your liner expense. Correct?
No. Well, bottom line is this, the citizen, when you add the citizens and the businesses together today, right, it's, it's, the top line revenue is one point eight million dollars, right at one point eight million. So if you go up to the twenty-nine fifty, we're in, we're saying we're going to increase that thirty-five percent across the board, businesses and citizens. So that one point eight million turns into two point three million. So you're going up five hundred thousand. So in effect, you're going to be less subsidies of five hundred thousand coming from what we've been doing, right? And, and, and the general fund is not going to be moving over, because you're going to get it in rates, right? Because if you stay at where we are, you know, we've been moving funds over to subsidize, but we're going up in the revenue on the top line by five hundred thousand dollars.
But that five hundred thousand dollar increase is being consumed by the liner, the closure, and the liner accrual, and the post-closure accrual that we have not ever put aside before.
But we've had to pay for the liner. We've, we've always had to pay for the liner, we borrowed for it.
Through debt, right.
Right? So what we weren't doing is, is the amount of accrual you're showing, which, which we got, so we'd have another half a million to start, you know, having more money to accrue without borrowing money.
That would be the assumption if you were not buying the liner, or if you were not buying a liner this year.
Well, uh, again, I, you'd have to work the numbers out, but I mean, the idea, if the general fund transfer, I mean, you know, that's, again, that's one of those things we've been, since I've been on council, you look at, we've been trying to bring that down. The problem is, we're not setting, setting aside for the things that are up there, the, the liner accrual, the post-closure, and, and we started setting aside a couple of years ago for the liner accrual, just not at a rate quick enough. But if we have, if it makes that general fund transfer go back up, then we're going in the wrong direction, and, because that, again, is one of those things that everybody that looks at our finances focuses on, that, that our own auditors, the APA, the rating agencies, they all point to, uh, that you're, you're subsidizing that with the general fund. So if you, you've been decreasing it, now all of a sudden it goes back up, you're going, in their minds, they're going to look at that and say you're going in the wrong direction, regardless of what the rates are. So, um, you know, that, to me, that's not good for the city's overall, uh, health and, and looking at things.
All right, maybe I didn't explain that right, if you was confused.
Let, let me take a step back here first, real quick, because this may be the confusion on everybody's part. If you look at either, either chart here, on either side of these screens, that additional that we are generating by the seven dollar and fifty cent rate increase, that's your six hundred thousand dollars for your liner accrual next year, not this year. That's twenty-twenty-one. Okay? Because the increase this year is going to go pay for the one point eight million dollars in liner. So that, I think that's where, there is no liner accrual in nineteen twenty, there is no closure accrual in nineteen twenty. Or, I mean, there, the nineteen twenty post-closure closure is accrual, but there, until you start setting aside the separate closure accrual, that's coming in twenty-twenty-one along with liner accrual.
Okay. All right.
So I think that was the, that's the difference.
So to keep these rates down is the best that we can keep them down. We need to figure out how to come up with one point eight million dollars and then start the accrual. Buy the liner this year, we've got a little bit of money, just not close enough, so we need one point eight million dollars to buy the liner right now. Traditionally, the city has always borrowed the money, we're not, can't do that. So our biggest obstacle, to keep the rates low, or, they're not low, but to keep them more reasonable, our biggest obstacle is the one point eight million that we're short right now today for the liner. Instead of trying to play catch-up, we need to figure out how we can come up with that one point eight million dollars.
There's two options. You've, well, I'll give you three options. One option is, and it comes in conjunction, I should say this is one option. One option is, you take the million dollars that's set aside for the nineteen twenty budget cycle for debt reserve, you take that million dollars, plus you pull eight hundred and fifty-two thousand out of the unassigned fund balance. That takes care of that. Now, when you do that, I will just go ahead and give you a preview of my budget, there has not been one dollar set aside for the school, other than, it was level funding as compared to last year. So if you want to do anything for the school, you're ta, you're taking that option off the table for the school. The other option is, we go back, we look at each department, and we cut one point eight million dollars from our departments.
Okay, let me ask you this. We've had some new businesses come online. We, in the past year, I'm going to go back two years, in the past two years, we've had X number of businesses come online with real estate taxes and revenues in sales of goods. So our growth rate right now, are we growing as a city, or are we still declining?
I was actually at a, a discussion yesterday afternoon, uh, that included every county, basically northeast Tennessee and locality, and then myself and, uh, Washington County, Virginia. And the numbers are showing that the actual, in actuality, the regions, now, I'll take it from a big overview, that the region's economy is actually declining. Uh, it's actually at a decline of, I think it was, uh, negative eight point nine percent as compared to where it was in two thousand fourteen, I believe was the comparison. So, um, specifically with the city, I think we're seeing revenues grow. But are we seeing revenues grow at an exponential rate that makes everyone feel excited? I would have to say no, I'm a little more on the conservative side, and I would say no, we're not seeing that growth rate that is going to make up one point eight million dollars.
How much do you think can be made up in our growth?
I think you're looking four hundred thousand to five hundred thousand.
Okay. So there's, there's a potential. I'm going to do five hundred thousand, because I like that number better.
So you're, so you're saying, that was going to be one of my questions, so by, by the time we wake up June first, or the end of the year, or when we're fixing to go into the next year, do you think the revenues from that point in time are going to be up relative to last year's revenue by the five hundred thousand?
I'm, uh, that's probably stretching it, but I'm going to say four to five hundred thousand.
I have a question about the, the statement that you just made about finding the one point eight million for the liner, and
Right.
one option was, well, going through each department and cutting out a total of one point eight million. Is that scenario just if the rate didn't change at all? Is that what you were saying? To find it somewhere else?
Correct. And, and let me clarify, too, we do have roughly seven hundred thousand set aside for the liner, is it?
We have approximately five hundred thousand of, of leftover bond proceeds, and we, at year-end, we will have three hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars of, um, accrual. So we have, we have some cash that are factored into these.
So that's seven hundred plus three fifty? What's the total?
Before I would give a specific number, um, are you asking me the total set aside?
You said seven hundred, you said three fifty, do you add those together and say you'll have about a million?
No, you'll have around, Mayor, we believe around eight hundred and fifty-five. That's an estimate. Because it's March, not June thirty. But I would, I would say that, um, you know, all these scenarios were, were built on several things. So before I would feel comfortable giving specific dollar amounts needed, I, I would need to go back and make sure I, I understand exactly what I was looking at.
I think someone else mentioned, and it's sort of like we're behind the eight ball this year because of that one point eight million to buy the liner right now. Is it too early? Now, that one point eight million won't be there this time next year, when we're looking at the next year's budget, is that right? Because if we're accruing and putting away money each year for the next three years or so.
Right.
Is it too early to talk about to see, okay, well, if we do this this year, what are we looking at the next year? Knowing that we still need to put away money for closure, post-closure, and liner, but...
It all depends on what the number is this year. I mean, sure, we could run fifty different options, but it doesn't make, it doesn't do anybody any good until I know what this number is this year. I mean, you can look at every scenario known to man, but it's...
Well, what's the other question I had? What's the, the unassigned fund balance? We had an eighteen percent threshold on, you know, that balance based on revenues, I think that's right at ten million or so. And we had fourteen point five, I think, in there, but some of that's accounted for for debt service or anything. So of the, of the amount that's in there now, and if you project forward till, you know, the end of this budget cycle, we wake up in June, how much do you project will be in that account? And how much will be left that's really not accounted for to pay the debt and have the reserve fund set aside?
As of March thirteenth, it was one point three million.
Yeah, but what would it be as we project forward to the end of this year? Would we still say at that?
I would be afraid to project that. I mean, it's, um, where we are right now, I know we're, we are, our revenues are exceeding our expenses, but to be able to put a number on it today, uh, I'm, I'm not going to answer that sitting here today without having to go look at the numbers.
Okay, but you feel like it'll be about one point three million, is that what, CFO, you think it's going to be close to that?
I'm going to answer in, in what I know, if I can, um, talk for a minute about what I know. If you look at last year's final results, um, and I think we talked about this in the finance committee, um, meeting, that if you took away carryovers and, and items of that nature that the city was responsible for, at the end of seventeen, eighteen, we were about two million dollars above the unassigned fund balance goal. And, and I think I, as I said in the committee level, at the committee conversation, and would say again today, that's not enough for a city our size that is as close to the legal debt margin as we are. That's my opinion. And that's what I know to be true. Looking at our cash balance right now and our revenues over expenditures, I do believe that will increase by, um, by year-end. I'm not comfortable, um, giving a number. I will tell you that we budgeted another million dollars toward that, that debt reserve account. So I'm, I'm very comfortable saying there will be a million dollars. I'm not, I, I believe it will be more than that if our revenues halt. That being said, um, you know, you got, when you have that conversation, you have to keep in mind how close the city is to its legal debt margin. And that, um, you know, what do we have set aside if something were to happen for, um, contingencies or emergency capital needs? So I feel like we've made a lot of progress there, um, but we still have a lot of work to do there.
Okay. So it looks like, just, I'm going to summarize what my mind is then, so it looks like if, if we do end up somewhere around a million, million and three that's left at the end of the year in the unassigned fund balance, it keeps us above our financial policy level and takes care of the debt service, then if we do the, the less liner we just talked about, you know, it's, um, we, we've, we've got a pot of money to close that gap completely. So there's money sitting there that would, that would allow us to pay for that and not, uh, take that fund, uh, to where we don't want it.
I would not recommend that, because we need, you know, I mean, that money was originally set aside to get us off the tan. We, we got there, we've exceeded that, or of our policy, but as the CFO pointed out, we really have no rainy day fund, no contingency, and we can all sit here, and I can think of probably i, in about two minutes, a half a dozen scenarios where we would wish we had a million, or, or at least a million or more in the bank. I mean, to, to have no, you know, I mean, we talked about the savings account, and everybody sees the, the big amount, which is to, to get us off the tan, that's just for cash flow purposes only. That's not really ever was designed to be used or anything, and to, to come in and use that money one time, I think, would leave the city in a, in a much, uh, worse financial position, um, regardless of what the use is. I think right now, we, we would be, do well to, to try to build, keep that cash on hand, because there are a lot of scenarios that could play out where we would, uh, wish we had that.
And we still would have the cash, we'd still have eight hundred thousand. So if we felt like we were too much in jeopardy on the amount of percent in the financial policy, we shouldn't have settled for eighteen percent, we should have put twenty percent or twenty-five percent. Because that was what we decided to do, and it seems like everybody, including rating agencies, was comfortable that eighteen percent, if we were there, we kept and held that there, we would be in, we'd be in a good position where we would never have to hit the tan. So we've not talked about that that's not the number we need. So if that's the number...
Let me be clear, Mayor, that is the number to, to keep us off of the tan. But I, I think the point I was trying to make was that, so if we have cash above that, where the city of Bristol is different from other localities, is because we are limited in the amount of funds we could borrow if there's a significant capital need. So, um, and I believe that, um, in our policy discussion, what we touched on was, once we meet the goal and we're comfortable above that, then we need to identify, setting aside for capital, setting aside for certain, um, emergency, as Mr. Hartley said, the rainy day fund. So I, what I'm, what I'm saying is, there is funds above that. The, the unassigned fund balance policy, the goal of that was to get us off the tan. And that's what it did. There are additional funds there, and, and I'm, I'm telling you, for a city as close to its legal debt margin as the city of Bristol is, that, that we need to have some surplus cash. That was my answer.
And so we're sitting here at fourteen and a half million versus the ten that we set for the policy, so there's a, there's a surplus of four and a half million, so we said...
That ends up being about eleven million, I'm sorry.
Okay, so the difference between eleven and fourteen and a half, or if it ends up to be fifteen at the end of the year, so there's still three and a half to four million of excess cash sitting there, it's above what we're talking about to make sure we stay off the tans, but we've accounted for some of that. We said we don't want, we don't want to consume all that, we want to make sure we've got plenty sitting aside for the rainy day, the, the debt service and other things that we, that we're not expecting. And even when you take that out, right, and set that aside, there's still roughly a million sitting there. So I'm not hearing a conversation that's making me uncomfortable, that we still don't have a little bit of money sitting there, you know, because she, she's already saying we need, we got eight hundred and fifty-five thousand to pay the liner, and if we only buy a portion of liner at one point two, one point three million, we got to come up with another half a million. So it sounds like there's, there's money there that can be done, and we're still okay.
Well, the way that I'm seeing this, and I agree with, uh, Mr., uh, with Wallace.
Oh, Wallace.
McCullough. Mr. Ham.
You know, when these companies come in, they have to charge X dollars to set up and tear down their equipment and machinery. So if you order more liner, it's going to cost more per footage of liner if you, if you break it up. So we need to try to get to the two point two million dollars if we can, okay? My question is, the liner is two point two million dollars. We have seven hundred thousand sitting right now for the purchase of that liner. So that leaves us one point five million short. We've established that we've had a growth spur of around a half a million dollars this year of additional funds that wasn't accounted for. So there's a half million, that takes us down to a million, that we're falling short on the liner, and being able to pay cash for it and not borrow it, that has never been done in the history of this city. We're at the tail end of one budget year, fixing to go into another budget year, is it possible that we can squeeze another five hundred thousand, whether we have to borrow it from one of our accounts internally in the city? Five hundred this budget cycle, and five hundred out of July one's budget cycle, and let's pay cash for a liner for the first time in the history of this city? Half of it, five hundred thousand this cycle, half of it after July one.
I'm going to say that's always an option, I'm going to say it's always an option, but I would also remind council that it's always been an audit finding for the past... been an audit finding for the past 11 years that the general fund is funding the solid waste disposal.
And it's going to be, it's going to be a finding going forward, Mr. Eads. We're so far away from crossing that threshold, it is going to be years of that finding still hitting our books. Right now is an opportunity to pay cash for a liner that has never been done in this city, and we can bust it up in two fiscal year cycles at 500,000 a year. Can we squeeze 500,000 out of this year's budget because we've set so much money aside? And then next year's budget, we're already at a 500,000 growth, so next year for the July 1 budget, we can anticipate we're still going to be at that growth because we're still on the growth side. So it will wash out at the end of the year. We need 500 this cycle, 500 next budget cycle, and we can pay cash.
We would have to look at that.
I believe that's doable.
Later this week.
I believe that's doable.
We can also pay cash by any one of those options that are on that board as well.
Yeah, but that hurts. The 2950 stings.
Just so I'm clear, Vice Mayor, are you talking about paying that from solid waste budget, or are you talking about an additional half a million dollar transfer in 18, 19 from the general fund for a half a million additional transfer from the general fund? Is that what you're asking?
Yes. I believe that scenario is doable. We just got to, we just got to think about it and do some serious crunching. We are so close to paying cash for a liner that this city has never done before. And if we stick with the 2950, that's 680,000 a year. That 500,000 can go to the liner, and that leaves you 130,000 to slide over to post-closure at 2950.
I just have one more comment about, previous comment, I believe you said, Vice Mayor, I'm not aware historically, except for the one large write-off, I'm not aware historically of the transfer, the transfer itself from the general fund to solid waste being over a million dollars. You mentioned that, and I just wanted to state, I wasn't aware of a time when it was just the transfer.
Yeah, okay. But still, we're subsidizing at the tune, we're going to round it off at 600,000. And none of them options gets us away from a transfer. So at 2950, if we can squeeze 500 out of this budget cycle, 500 out of next year's budget cycle, we can pay cash. And then this 2950 will kick in, and that'll give us 630, 990,000. Take away 500,000 for liner, that leaves you 130,000 to slide over to post-closure.
We'll just have to look at those numbers to see if that's the way it's going to work out. I mean, to say, I'm not going to sit here and give a number today and say, yeah, that is going to work or it's not.
Let's take a five-minute recess, and then we'll come back.
All right, I'll pick back up because I was just talking to Mr. Eads and the CFO, and they're saying that the, explain that again. Because I was a little confused.
And I will, I will attempt to, Mr. Eads, if I'm not being clear, stop me. In these options up here, at these rates, those things up there are summary items that are included. If there is a discussion, we began the meeting from 33 down to 29 and a half. Mr. Eads calculated that's going to be roughly a $280,000 reduction. So if you're comparing that to option four, you have to find $280,000 somewhere. And then began the discussion with Wallace, can you buy less liner? So in option four, at 33, is 1.852, comma, zero, 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 of liner. So if you're looking for $280,000, my response, and I think Mr. Eads would concur, actually, I think it was his response, if you're going to cut 280,000, you're buying less liner.
And my question, sorry to jump in, but is that option possible? We know it's not ideal, but is it possible to get by?
What?
That option, if we're finding it from that, that line, that difference in money, difference in liner?
You can always make things work. It's just, it's just less efficient, so.
Less efficient, not ideal.
We could do anything that, that we have to. It's just, you know, we may have to buy a liner earlier.
We may have to start piramiding once again.
All right, so with that said, and I'm still on the less liner cause, you're not going to pay cash.
Can you turn your mic, is your microphone on?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I do agree paying cash, but if you go pay cash for something, whether it's, you know, five tanks of gas or whatever, you're only going to buy what you really need. So if we truly have a process now of putting trash in there and keep it level, where we could buy less liner, pay cash for it, for where the city is today, that's the right thing to do. Because we've got a lot of other thing, and other options going forward to talk about so we don't overspend our cash or overbuy something. So I'm still seeing that there's enough cash here to go ahead and pay for a partial liner. It's still going to, it's still going to serve us a good year and a half to two years out, right, by changing the process, right? And so the only thing we have to figure out is, with all the other rate increases that we're going to have to do, because we're, this is just one rate increase. This is just residential rates, right? So we've still got to increase the other rates, and there's, there's more dollars there. We still would have the ability to be in a good position for the next budget cycle to move forward, and then see where we are a year from now and take the next step.
Well, all right. I'm going to be very careful how I say this, and I hope council will be very careful in their response. I think I have advised every council member about different options that have been bounced around in regards to the future of the landfill. However, there is no consensus among anyone, I think, as to how to move forward. I believe there's two people on council that have an idea of how to move forward with the landfill in future years, which would require less liner, but I don't believe there's ever been a consensus about that option. So when you're saying buy less liner now, and if we continue on at the current collection and waste rates that we have at this point, we will use that liner that much quicker and not have as much money accrued when that liner is due. So this discussion is basically probably a three or a four-phase discussion to solve this problem. I think we all agree to that. And when I say phase, I mean budget years. And do I think this problem's going to be solved today? No. Do I think it'll be solved next week? No. Is it going to be solved next year? I doubt it. But when you're throwing out options that have not been fully vetted by the entire council, just my opinion, I think it's premature to assume that that's the way the council would agree to go in the future. And I'll just leave it at that.
Okay. My question is to the CFO. Earlier, we established there were 700,000 set aside for the, for the liner.
She said about 855.
Okay, 855, okay.
That's what we estimate at June 30, 2019. We will have in a combination of liner accrual and bond proceeds remaining.
Okay, all right. So that leaves us a million and a half short. Am I correct on that?
On a $2 million liner, yes.
On a $2 million liner.
Is that correct?
Well, no, I mean, no, if you're looking at those two numbers by themselves, yes. But if you look at the work papers, every dollar is accounted for.
What do you mean by that? So now I'm confused. Either the 855 is there to pop liner or not.
It is, and it's in all four options.
It's in all four.
It's in option one, option two, option three, option four.
Clarify, where that line says 1920 liner, and it says 1,852,000. 850,000 that we have set aside is built into that number?
It's a revenue offset to that number.
But I mean, that's, there is enough revenue that 850, if you showed the revenue somewhere, it would make, it's accounted for in that number.
Yes, it's used to, and it's, it's in option one. It's going toward the 2 million as well. It's in every option.
When you say it's accounted for, you mean the 1.852 million, you've already got 855,000 to pay, so you really only need to make up a million.
I didn't quite view it like that, but yes, yes, Mayor. Every one of those options has revenue that offsets it. These are summary, summary numbers. At 44, you can get a $2 million liner and have those things in place. That's what those are up there.
And I would also, I mean, council has each of those options in front of you, the work papers. We gave those to you last week. And it shows the revenue offsets and the expenses associated with each one of these options. So we can sit here and try to pare it down off the summary, but I would encourage council to continue to review those worksheets because it shows the expenses and revenues for each one of these options and where it's coming from.
Yeah, well, I've looked at all those details. So the one question I got, you know, this is an enterprise fund, so I want to make sure everybody keeps that in context. So we've got to make decisions on this one like it's a business decision. This is not a government decision. This is enterprise fund, right? So if you're in business, and your, and your business is to sell something and you have to package it, you don't go buy four years of packaging if you can get away with a year and a half or two. You just never do that in business. You buy the inventory necessary to keep the business cash flow managed properly to move forward. And so that's why if we can, if we truly have a technical means of buying half liner or even a fourth liner, right, from a, from a operational perspective as a business, if you're comfortable, you can do that and operate the full year, that's what you do. So, so you got to think of it in those terms, you know, really as a business. What would I do if this was my business coming out of my checkbook, right? And I had to buy that liner inventory to operate? Would I buy the full four years or would I buy two years? Because it's, it's a huge cash flow discussion. And you got to do what's absolutely the minimum necessary to get you through the next, you know, operating cycle. And in our case, it's a year.
Okay. Y'all just got to forgive me. This government math is blowing my head because I'm, I'm used to crunching numbers my way, all right? Now I need to establish, this council set aside money for a liner, how much money have we set aside for that liner?
352,200.
As of June 30, 2019, if solid waste revenues hold...
Okay.
There is an estimated 352,000.
Okay, thank you. Now, we borrowed 6 million three and a half years ago for liner and road construction in the falls. The falls was all taken care of, VDOT's paid, whatever, we wrote the check, whatever. Now setting in the bank that that money was borrowed is 480,000?
495,000.
495,000.
Those funds must be expended.
That was borrowed money for roads and liner.
Let me be, I'm going to clarify that. There was 6 million, two separate bond issues.
Yes.
3 million was for the road at the falls.
Yep.
Another 3 million was a combination of two items. One, 2,400,000 for the liner, 960,000 for capital general fund items. Very limited, very specific. I don't have the bond document in front of me, but it could only cover certain things.
Okay, so it's...
So that's where the 6 million that you're referencing comes from. Two separate issues.
Okay, but it was borrowed for capital, and there's 495,000 of that left.
Of the 2,400,000 solid waste, specific liner borrowings, there is 495,000 of that. And it was specifically in the bond document to purchase liner for solid waste.
Okay. Now, with your proposals, Mr. Eads, that 495,000 has been eaten up or used in these budgets?
That's correct.
Okay, are they, is that 490 for capital, or is it operational cost?
That's going towards, it's a revenue that is going specifically for the liner.
As required by the bond document, it is not allowed to be spent for operational expenditures.
Okay, so we do have over 700,000 sitting right now for the liner?
Yes, as every option has detailed from, from the beginning.
And those summaries include that 700,000.
850.
Yeah, 852,000.
As did Mr. Eads' presentation mention that last workshop.
Okay. Actually, it's more than 700,000, and that's a good.
It's 852.
852, okay. Okay, so that means, let me do the math on this. So that means we're less than a million dollars away from borrowing a liner.
Every option up there, Mr. Wingard, was zero borrowing for a liner.
Understand that, understand that.
So if we're talking...
I'm trying to figure out if there is a path to take half of the liner that we're falling short right now and budget for, write it, pay for it this year, and then next budget cycle finish it.
Basically, let me understand, you want to take money out of this year's budget and use it to pay for the liner for next year, right?
Portions of it. You've said that we've grown our tax base by about 500,000.
So you want to come...
Can I ask what you're thinking on that, Mr.? If I'm not mistaken, that bottom line, the cash carryover options three and four, we're do exactly, are doing exactly what Mr. Wingard's saying.
That's correct.
I mean, we're taking, or we're drawing down our existing fund base.
But that's coming from the solid waste disposal fund.
Yeah, but I mean, we're taking cash on hand.
Right, and by taking that cash on hand, remember on July 1, the solid waste disposal fund has a large check to write for our debt. So we, we are very limited in the amount of cash, or the amount that we can carry over because we have to write a check for that debt. I don't know the exact number as of today, but there's roughly 2.3 to 2.5 million sitting in the solid waste disposal fund that's cash, but the majority of that is going to be used to write a check July 1 to cover the debt payment. Is that, am I right or wrong?
We estimate if solid waste revenues hold and expenditures stay in line, which we anticipate will happen, that, that the year-end cash balance will be around 1.9 million in solid waste, of which July 1, 711,000 has to be ACH wired out for a bond payment. Once again, and so that leaves an available estimated cash of 1.2. It's important to keep in mind that the post-closure liability on the books, which is why the net position is negative, is 8.6 million. But Mr. Hartley and Mr. Eads are exactly correct. That 300,000 is pulling from the 1.2 I just mentioned.
One thing that we haven't talked about at all, and I'm really happy about, is no one has talked about in any of this discussion about really cutting any services, and I think that's good. I don't want to go there. I think the city provides a high level of service already in the different types of collections that we have. I think someone mentioned earlier, really no option, none of the four that we're looking at on the screen, or even the other option, which is not really up there, but a dollar amount some of us have talked about of being, of a rate of around 2950 is an ideal option just because of all of the expenses, the debt, the liner, closure, post-closure. You know, I'd like to talk a little bit about the rate, because we've talked about a lot of numbers, but as far as the actual rate that the people will pay, you know, going from 22 now up to, let's say, option four, 33, is a 50% increase. And I think I had told each person on the council and you all individually, over times when we first started talking about, we realized the rate needs to change. My thought was, well, we're... My thought was, well, we're at 22. If we could be at, and I said 29, 2950, 2999, whatever it is, as long as that first number is still a two, it doesn't really seem in my mind that it is a big jump. You know, I'm a real estate agent, I've seen houses that are for sale for $100,000 and they don't sell, and then the price drops to 99,999 dollars and someone buys it because they think they're not spending as much money. Same kind of principle where as long as that first number's a two, it maybe sounds a little better, like it's not that big of an increase. Now, I know definitely that's not where we want to, essentially where we need to be at. Even option four, or option two is not where we need to be at to cover everything. Is that right?
That's correct. I mean, you would, the transfer from the general fund every year equates to about an 11.20 rate if you equated that to solid waste disposal fund dollars. So if you wanted to entirely get rid of the general fund transfer, you would add at least 11.20 to each one of these rates that you see before you.
So we're talking a lot about macroeconomics. If you break it down into the microeconomics, it's a difference of $3.50 a month that we're talking about, 2950, 33. And that comes out, if you do the 2950, it's 90 dollars a year extra. If you do the 33, it's 132 dollars a year extra. So it's really only a 42 dollar a year difference between 2950 or, you know, less than 42, if you go 2999 or whatever, and 33. So it's, we're all talking about, well, this isn't, you know, this is going to hurt more if we do 33. It's 42 dollars a year. It's not going to hurt a whole lot more than, you know, 90 to 130. It's not going to hurt a whole lot more. And it puts us in a much better position going forward and gives us the option to avoid having an even bigger increase next year. I mean, because we're going to, we know we're going to have to increase it next year. It gives us the option to avoid an even, even uglier increase next year, I think. So I mean, it's a no-brainer to me.
Well, I would say you got to, you know, you've got community citizens out there that are on fixed income. And 42 dollars is a big deal to a lot of them. And that's not a big deal to me, and that's not a big deal to the folks sitting up here, but there's plenty of people you talk to, it's, that's a big deal. So 10 to 15 dollars is a big deal because they're on fixed income, they've got medications, they've got all kinds of stuff. So we've got to be sensitive to that. That's why you've got to be really careful, right, as we go forward, because we could still, we could still help solve this thing and limit how much, you know, they're having to put out of their checkbook, right, to pay for this. So, so yeah, it is, it's the number you said, you know, I agree with that. And to us, it's, you know, not a big number, and to a lot of people. But to some, it is. To some, it's really important. And that's the unfortunate thing, because we want to be really careful with that. But if you go up 50% on the citizens, I've not heard anybody say, are you going to go also up 50% on the businesses' rate? You going to take the 80 to 120, which is enough, which is 50%? You going to take the 160 to 240? Because we've got to talk about that, because that discussion now is an even different discussion from a business standpoint. Because now all of a sudden, those folks can go out, you know, businesses, they go out and they quote, you know, private companies. And so that 50% increase takes you, takes you over the rate that they could get from other companies. So in my perspective, you're going to lose businesses. There is no doubt about it, it's a fact.
Well, that's the same way, that's the same way we haven't looked at it.
So then are you going to go up 50% on the citizens? And you're not going up 50% on the, on the businesses? So how is that fair?
Well, we can look at going up 50% on the businesses, but I mean, just kind of like Mr. Hartley said, it's going to negatively affect small businesses more than big businesses. Because they've got dumpsters already, the big businesses. And I mean, we can, this is the same reason we're not trying to raise the commercial rates.
So you'd say you'd go up 50% on citizens, but you might only go up 40% on businesses?
We'd go 50 on businesses if we want to, I guess. But I mean, we run the risk of losing them.
Yeah, and we can't take that risk.
Yeah, I agree with you.
So 50% puts you in a dilemma of, if you go up that on the citizens and go up that fairly on the businesses, now you're in a problem with, you know, what effect that's gotten to losing businesses, right? So we've got to be, that's why we've got to be careful about this next step, right? Because you've got to go up fair across the board. And, and you know, there's a bunch of other stuff on here that you probably, you know, like if you, if you backed in the rate of 2950 or 33 or whatever, and the, and the businesses, and then you look down here and say, you know, city residents, you know, the proposed change of, you know, taking 500 dollars tipping and go across the scales, you know, it's only 8 dollars a ton. So if you, if you go calculate that number, that's way lower than what they're paying, you know, to pick up. So this whole sheet's got to shift, right, to make it fair. Now, that doesn't probably create a lot of revenues, but, you know, you've got to, you've got to have that in the discussion. So we've got to just not keep talking about the one, settle on the one, and then what are we going to do with the rest of them? Because we've got to get a number for him. And I think my 35% that I opened this discussion with was, I felt like it was not the full move that we could take, but it was more fair because we're going to have to go up about the same amount, you know, for the businesses. And then it puts them where they need to be, where we're still safe from a market standpoint, right? We're still very competitive, you know, compared to what they could pay, you know, going on the outside, so.
Well, I'm not going to, you're right, we do need to look at that. I think that's part of the discussion. I mean, at some point, I think it's by an ordinance, so we'll have to have a, I think, is that correct?
That's right.
So we'll have to have a public hearing and a first and second reading. But from a budgetary standpoint, like I said, that was my point, is that it's, it's not really a, the bigger difference is in the residential rate, because you have so many more customers. You only have 130 customers there. So it's not, from a budgetary standpoint, it's not that much. And what, you know, the city manager, if he's going to present a budget on Tuesday, he needs to know the rate so he can do that. And that's really where we need to get, so we can have something to, to look at the budget and look at everything as a whole and see how that fits in. But, you know, some of those things, yeah, it probably needs, I don't remember when the last, we looked at that at one point, but yeah, it needs to be looked at. And then, you know, that there's a lower rate for people bringing their trash up there, you know. Again, I would say, yeah, it should be lower because the city's not having to spend resources to pick it up. I mean, you know, I can set something up to the front of my house by the road for free, and the city will pick it up, but if I go up there and take it, it actually costs me money.
Yeah, but that's still low compared to disposal. That takes collection out of it.
To me, that, you know, it's like if I'm willing to let it sit there for a few days, the cost is nothing. It's more of, I'm paying because I don't want it to sit there and I don't want to listen to my wife say, why is that sitting at the road for a week, over the weekend? But, you know, I think there are things like that. There's a lot of things to look at, but from the overall budget point of view, I don't think it, getting to this rate, I think, would help us move forward quicker.
Okay, Randy is correct. He has no senses, as it stands right now. And I'm seeing a path to pay cash for a budget at 2.2 million dollars. We just need to somehow, we need to either borrow money out of our general fund, out of another account that's just sitting there. Last I heard, we had 5 million dollars locked up, drawing interest. Is it still there?
But that is all accounted for, that's part of your tan.
I understand that.
It's covering that.
I understand that. We're no longer using tans now, so we're not borrowing money. So there's nothing to really stop us from borrowing money from internal ourselves.
Right.
So we're, under this plan right here, we can raise the rate to nine, I mean, to 2950, pay cash for a liner at 2.2 million dollars, borrow 424,000 dollars from ourselves instead of going outside and paying interest, borrow the money from ourselves this physical budget cycle, 1819, and then we're at a 500,000 dollar a year growth spurt right now. So in our 1920 budget, we can take that 500,000 growth, apply it to this 425,000 in two budget cycles, 425, 424 from one, 424 for the other. We've paid cash for a liner. Now we're starting to accrue at 2950, which is going to allow us to generate an additional 630,990 dollars, set aside 500,000 a year for a liner, set aside 130,000 for post-closure. And I am making the recommendations to move forward with that option. Now, do I have to?
Are you saying, are you saying that we're going to spend 500,000 dollars we don't have? That we haven't accounted for yet?
What was that question?
Because I'm trying, I'm trying to follow, follow along with what you did just there. Are you trying to spend 500,000 from next year that we don't have this year?
No, we've got it. We've done, earned it. Mr. Eads established we're 500,000 dollars to the head on additional revenues that we did not budget for in our budget from last year because of the growth inside the city.
Is that correct?
Those are gen, he, I think, Mr.
Those are general numbers, I mean.
In general fund revenues.
In general fund numbers.
In general funds.
And all because I'm projecting a 500,000 dollar increase for next year does not necessarily mean that we'll have that in 1920.
That is correct, but every entire budget is proposed, you assume. There are no fixed numbers other than, unless you go back to 1718. Those are established fixed numbers. Everything else is proposals.
I think, honestly, gentlemen, I think we're at a point where I'm going to put off the budget presentation. It sounds like there needs to be more discussion. And I will just tell you, April 9th, I'm going to throw a solution out there for the landfill, and it'll be voted on up or down on April 9th. And that will also be denied at the tax rate, and it will also be the budget presentation. I think we can sit here and continue to discuss this for hours, and I don't think there's going to be a general consensus to move forward.
I don't, I don't agree with that.
But you did not give the gentleman an option to give you a consensus on my proposal.
Well, I'm against your proposal. Anthony, where are you at?
So we know where these guys are, so they're on option three. So I'm at 29, I'm at 2950, 2975, that's where he's at. I'm okay with paying cash. If you're good with that and you pay cash, we've got to, we've got to see where Anthony's at, right? And then, let me just say this too. Once we agree on this number, he can, he has the numbers to put it in the budget, right? They can roll it up. We've still got to, we've still got to put everything together.
I'm still, I'm still, I'm going to.
Let me finish.
Mayor, just let me say, I'm going to put the budget off. If it's not 33 dollars, the budget presentation's going off. We've got to go back and adjust the numbers. And it's, I mean, that's the only safe thing to do, to make sure that we're exactly right. I'm not rushing through a budget presentation over the next 48 hours just so I can have a budget presentation on March 26th.
That's fine. We can put it off, we can put it off another week.
Just put it off.
And overall, we kind of built in with the calendar some extra time, right, where March 26th presentation is, it's okay to push that back.
It's important for everyone to be aware that the treasurer will send tax bills out on April the 10th. And the tax rate, and this is not historically how the city's done it, but the tax rate should be set before the bills go out. So it's important for everyone to know that. So I think that's why the plan was, Mr. Eads would present March 26th. Everybody would have a couple of weeks to look at that, and then we would establish the tax rate. That being said, we can certainly do both on, on April 9th.
And that's fine, because we've got departments to go through a bunch of other stuff, and we've got other discussions to have to settle those too, so.
So, you know, looking at the city, we have a lot of debt, and not just solid waste, the whole city. We have a large amount of debt. We have our real estate taxes and our property taxes that are high, that we're, you know, using to pay that debt or to get by. In a way, we're all just trying to get by. So if the rate goes from 22 to 2950, can we get by?
You can get by.
I think that's where we need to be.
So you've got a consensus, 2950?
We've got a consensus, 2950, and we can pay cash for a liner in two budget cycles.
You're paying cash now. You're going to be paying cash in one budget cycle.
And we're under every option that has been presented.
Yeah, but at a substantial increase in rates.
So we know we're paying cash, we know we're not borrowing anymore, which we've always borrowed for that. And we also know 2950 this year, it may not be that the next year. Is that right?
It probably won't, but what'll it be next year?
You think?
Without doing the numbers, I'd hate to, I mean, it'd be pure speculation and.
But next year, we won't have that 1.852 million number up there, right?
And we'll have 500,000 dollars a year going towards a budget, so that 500 can be pulled out. Because we've established, we can pay for that liner with this increase over a four-year period. And they're saying the liner will last three to four years.
No, they said a 2 million dollar liner.
A 2 million dollar liner.
And.
This, we're not buying a 2 million dollar liner now.
Not at 2950.
We're buying about a 1.3 million dollar liner.
See, I don't understand that.
Which is half a liner, that's what we should do, not buy the full liner.
I don't understand that.
Alright, any other thing, Anthony?
No.
Alright.
Okay, my budget presentation's put off to April 9th.
Alright, thanks.